Did you ever find out why so many checks to one vendor?
No, I'm sorry.
Talking about that last meeting?
That was Irving, correct?
It's showing Irving this time. Are we getting, do we get, do we pay a per check fee?
Not that I know of.
Are they being mailed together? I mean, we're not putting a 49 stamp on each one, are we?
No, we mail them all together.
Because last week, there was one for $2.40.
That was Irving, correct?
Or Mar Gas.
I think it was Irving.
It was the gas account.
It's showing Irving this week.
Yeah.
Michael, what's wood sheet metal?
I just want to know, so.
I have to see it. Say on the invoice. Hope something Joe needed sheet metal?
He heard it was $25. I was like in the kitchen.
Kitchen? Uh, the, um.
Stained steel backsplash.
Putting backsplash in the kitchen around, on the sink.
Stained steel backsplash. Two check records?
Yeah. The one, there's one from last week that wasn't included. That's why you see one there. It's an extra, extra copies.
This is the one from last week that he couldn't find?
Yep. That's why their own invoices go long term.
I think there's a silent sheet, so please make sure everyone signs in. Thank you.
Why you say?
Do you have still this one, Joseph?
Yeah. Still with Tom Tom? Everybody on the manifest, so can I have a motion to approve the manifest, please?
I'll make a motion.
For second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Minus of the last meeting.
You don't know how to spell Talia Ferrero?
Neither.
I know the visitors, it's Sandra.
Oh, poor Sandra.
How do we spell that, Jerry?
F.E.R.R.O.?
Yes.
Beautiful, fix that up.
We will write it down.
And she's here today, I apologize.
Anything else?
Page two of the agenda, but one of the minutes. Under public comment, this, I'm talking about November 5th right now.
What page?
It's the first page.
Page of the minute, but it's page two in the bottom.
In the packet. Under public comment, the second bullet, it says Jerry O'Connor had asked about the profits tree and log removal. I think that was Crawford's, isn't that correct?
Crawford's, I think that was, yeah.
What else? Motion approved the minutes of November 5th, 2014, as amended.
Make that motion.
For a second.
I'll say it.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. I wasn't here.
Get two more. Any more to make a motion on October 28th?
Where's one, which one you asked for?
October 28th.
October 28th?
Mm-hmm.
Page one of the agenda, on the other packet.
It would be the work session again.
I'll make that motion.
For a second.
I'll second it.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
I abstain also. Any reason why we can't do the November 5th? Non-public, right?
Make a motion to approve those minutes as they are written.
For a second.
I'll second it.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Public comment. If I pronounce this in good, Megan Borgoni?
Borgone.
Borgoni, sorry?
Yes. Hi.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Thank you so much to the school board for having me here tonight and to Superintendent Tracy for helping me arrange this. I'm here with the support of some family members here, some families here who have kids in the school, to ask a very special request. I sent a letter through Superintendent Tracy's office, sorry. So I'm not sure if everybody has had a chance to read it, but I just want to give you a little bit of background on this request. I'm here tonight because my son Owen is a second grader here at the Paul School, and he attends St. John's Community Day School before and after school, during holidays, school vacations, snow days, et cetera. I also have a one-year-old who's there full-time. Recently, Tara Dexter, who is the director of the daycare at the end, who, by the way, is an incredible asset to this town, she has won a governor's award for excellence in childcare, and her childcare center is just the best there is. She was told by St. John's Church that they can no longer afford to maintain the building that the day school is in anymore. So the day school has to close or relocate. At first, the church told the school that we had until January 1st to make this decision or this move. Now they're saying we may have until June. Tara has worked with Realtor Wayne Robinson, looked at every viable option inside town limits. Anything that would even come close to meaning code for a daycare, she's looked at and searched all over the place. There is no available space in the town of Wakefield. So she did find, last week, after searching and searching, space actually that was offered to her through someone who read the article in Foster's Daily Democrat about this situation that we have going on. Someone contacted her and said there was space in the Milton Head Start Building. So, the problem is, there are at least 13 school-aged children that attend school here at the Paul School that need transportation to and from daycare. This stop, this proposed bus stop, is less than two miles at the end of the Union Route that currently exists. So we are asking for you to please add a stop at the Milton location, which is 55 Industrial Way, so that we can have the day school remain open and that we have access to childcare. If this daycare closes, there are only two other options in Wakefield. They're both full. They can't take our kids. So unless this bus stop is established, we won't have adequate childcare for our kids before and after school. I work in Manchester, my husband works in Portsmouth, Sean, Shane, Wilson, Lee. We all have long commutes. All these are young, professional families that not only contribute to Wakefield economically, but we also contribute as volunteers. My husband and I just wrapped up our first season of coaching a rec soccer team in town, which was a challenge because we got the UE group. But we love it, and we love being here. I moved up to Wakefield three years ago from the seacoast, and people ask me almost every day, "Why the heck I live in the woods?" And I tell them because I love it here. I've honestly never felt more at home anywhere. I've lived all over the place. And when we first moved up here, Owen was in private school in Dover. I didn't know anything about the school district, I didn't know anything about the people up here. So I had him in private school, and I had him join me on my commute every day. But then I met Tara when I had my baby, and I met more moms in town, and I started talking to them, and I switched Owen into the Paul School because of his reputation with parents. I don't want to send him back to private school, I want him to stay here with his friends. But if St. John's isn't open and I don't have daycare before and after school, it's not going to happen. And I'm not alone. I'm not the only one with this problem. There are going to be 13 families who have no childcare unless we add this bus stop. So we're just here tonight as a big group of us to ask you to please consider extending a route by two miles, less than two miles, so that the daycare can move to an acceptable location and that we won't lose care for our kids.
Do you know when the kids would be starting to get picked up and where? And then, final destination, what approximate time they'd be arriving at the school?
Right now, how does it work? They get picked up in the morning, they have a bus that goes to St. John's.
I believe we would be the first pickup in the morning because they'd come right up from the high school, jump off, exit 18, grab our kids from the Milton location, and head on their route. And then in the afternoon, we would be the last drop-off from that Union Bus. Somebody I know did a little research through the buses, and I guess there's only 45 children on that route if every single child on that route took that bus. And there are 77 spots available on the bus, so seating wouldn't be an issue.
The first stop is 7:30 on that bus, okay, ten minutes before that.
All right. And so you're open to the idea of mixed ages?
Mm-hmm. That's what they do now.
Oh, no, the high schoolers would already be dropped off, and then they would come grab our children after, when they start their elementary route.
On their way back north?
Correct.
And currently, because St. John houses so many students, they actually have a bus that they separately are sending out anyways to just drop children off at St. John, and I actually think Wakefield Childcare is on there as well. And then they go back to the school, and then they do their regular rep. Because there are so many students that are attending the schools, there's already an additional route that's kind of going out for them.
And it's 13 kids now, and they're full of, how many more is?
There's 30 total in the center, and they're all mostly Wakefield students, so they'll all be coming here eventually.
Well, so it'll be eliminated in the St. John's route completely?
Yes.
Completely? So that'll be out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Have you talked this over with him, Michael?
I got a few notes from him today that I could share with the board when we decide to discuss it.
Well, what part of the day would the kids be getting picked back up and brought home? Do you know that?
From school town?
Yeah, 3 o'clock, 4:05, and I suppose this is. The way the bus route, on the website, is it tells you the exact time in the morning, and then tells you, on the way home, it would be the opposite, but it doesn't tell you what those times are. But it would be the last stop. So whatever time that Union, that last Union stop is, it would be a few minutes after that because it's 1.8 miles further.
Well, this is, Industrial Way, is that by the farm museum?
It's past the farm museum.
North of the farm museum?
It's before the farm museum.
It's north of the farm museum?
Yes.
Isn't there already a daycare in there operating?
They do not operate anymore. They saw our article in Foster's, and she called me and offered her space because it's just wasted space. It's moving ready.
Yeah, it's already designed for it, right?
It's perfect.
She has this tiny little bus stop issue.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
Well, I just want to quickly say too, it's not that we're not choosing somewhere in town is the other thing. I just want to reiterate that there isn't a center in town. There is no other, it's not like the school runs a before-after-school care program, so the after-care part of it, that is one of our only options as parents, is St. John or Wakefield Childcare is the other one, which is full already. There is a lot of school-aged children, not a lot of placement for them for before and after-school programs in the area, unfortunately.
And even though there are two, one of which is Pine River, so many of us commute so far south, I commute, my husband and I both commute 15 minutes a day if there's no traffic on the General Sullivan. If we even could get into Pine River Pond, we would have to go, it would be another half an hour onto our commute every day, and we just can't, we can't, we can't do that, you know? We're doing an hour and 40 minutes of driving each a day, we can't add another half an hour on. But there's no room in Pine River anyway.
Well, what kind of timeframe do you need for an answer back from us?
The sooner the better. The charge is ready for us to move out before the heating bills start skyrocketing. Milton, she's still getting numbers together because if we would just be paying our fair share of utilities, they don't have a mortgage there. So that also helps us keep our rates low where we are, nonprofit center. So it could move pretty quickly. We basically wanted an answer from the board before we went ahead and started a new nonprofit.
I also have a copy of the letter with signatures on the back page of all the families at the center.
I need to work against the signatures.
I want to see it. Is the date on board?
The date. So we'll talk about it. I think I get from Michael, we'll also discuss it. Got a few.
Just say I'll let them know so they can leave if they want to leave the meeting.
Yeah. All right, we'll get back to you when we decide, when we decide.
Is there any guests as to timeframe, just so that we can be prepared?
I'm thinking we may discuss that later this evening.
We'd really appreciate it.
And I'll get back in touch with you.
We'll have soup.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, new business? Board member conduct?
I would like to make a motion under BDB to restructure the board.
BDB. Is that a new policy?
No, it's just board officers.
BDE.
BDB.
Want to get a copy of that, by, by, forward?
All it is, is, it's the board officers, and it says that the chairperson and vice-chairperson shall be elected at the annual organizational meeting to serve until the next annual organizational meeting or until a successor is elected.
And how does that apply?
Well, by the majority of the board, we can choose to elect a new chair.
Do you have a proposal for a new chair?
I am vice chair. I don't know who the rest of the board would figure. I can tell you my reasons for asking, I would like to know.
Of course.
I looked over policies, BCA, as well as BBAB. I have found that in dealing with Mr. Brown as chairperson, I have not felt that all of these obligations have been met by ethics or by obligations. And I feel that to move forward in a and hopefully a more productive venue, that change needs to be made. I am looking at rules and duties of the chair, and I have six highlighted.
BBAB, you're talking about?
Yes, sir, BBAB. Of things that I don't specifically see happening in my personal situation with Mr. Brown. I have six that I don't feel that he does.
Is this because he didn't want to answer the phone?
We asked, the majority of us, asked for an emergency meeting to discuss situations that happened at our last board meeting, and three of us were ignored. So as vice chair, I had board members calling me because their chairperson didn't answer the phone.
Well, was that the email correspondence you were seeking, an emergency meeting?
I sent out one email, I did. And that's what I did after my chair did not answer phone calls.
And I responded as a superintendent?
Well, if you don't respond to us, we feel that you're not communicating with us, Mr. Brown.
I responded to the superintendent because the superintendent in that email specifically said that you're not supposed to be going board member after board member answering emails.
Then why did the rest of the board not see that?
I don't know, you'd have to ask the superintendent.
And some of us board members are also fully aware of the idea of email business, board business conducted by email. Some of us are well aware of board business that should not be conducted over the phone or coffee shop talk and stuff like that. There's reasons for those issues not to be acted as a, we had a problem with, I believe all of us probably had a problem with former board members conducting business over the phone. So I don't know why you'd want to encourage board members to conduct business over the phone.
I am not asking people to conduct business over the phone. I am asking from my chair, when I need him, to be there. I want him to work respectfully with other board members to achieve an educational goal of the school district by encouraging free expression of opinions by all board members, to communicate with other board members and the superintendent's expressions of public reaction to board policies and school programs. I want him to recognize that no individual member has authority to speak or act for the entire board, except if not specifically designated to do so by the board, and to display and demonstrate courtesy and decorum toward fellow board members at all public meetings and in public statements. And I also want him to confer with the superintendent on crucial matters that may occur between board meetings and notify all board members. Call emergency meetings when the board, as necessary. meetings when the board is necessary. Preside and be responsible for an orderly conduct of all board meetings and to enforce the board's policy relating to the order of business and the conduct of meetings.
Well, to answer your question, Ralph, when I first saw that email was on the SAU website, our site, and she was asking for an emergency meeting, the way I took it, there wasn't correspondent back and forth of saying, "Do you want this or not?"
What was the cause for an emergency meeting?
For the parking lot situation.
And what was the emergency? We have a 60-day...
Because we need to move forward with the parking lot.
But we can't right now.
Isn't there like a 60-day timeframe where things have to be duly noted, duly posted, and public hearings?
There's a 60-day, 60-day written notice by the advice of our attorney. A 60-day written notice to the town, which will include plans, specifications, an explanation of the proposed changes, a statement about government use, and a proposed construction schedule. Has that been done Superintendent Terzis?
No.
Has the meeting been scheduled yet?
The next...
Until the board directs me to do so.
The next item is oh, the school district will also be required to comply with the expendable trust requirements and expendable funds for the project. RSA 198, semicolon, 20 dash C2 requires the school board to hold a public hearing prior to expending funds. Prior to the hearing, the school district must provide notice of the time, place, and subject matter of the hearing in a newspaper of general circulation in Wakefield at least seven days before the hearing is held. So just those two items by the advice of our attorney, you can't have an emergency meeting because these two items have not been met. And that's what I conveyed to the superintendent.
Bonnie? I think it's hard for us to, we were at the, we were all at the workshop and we all agreed on what the minutes said before any of the other turmoil started. So I guess it's hard to, how do you give a 60-day, a 60-day notice with a plan if you haven't approved who you want to do the job yet? So we have to move forward in what we were talking about to approve the job so that you can give the 60-day notice and have that person that we picked because part of the RFP is to design the plan and to have the plan approved.
You still, you still have to...
Well, no, the plan was approved. Well, please don't...
I just, it's counterproductive. I believe, Bonnie, I believe...
Now, motion, I made a motion. I don't know if it's...
I want to move the motion.
Well, how do you have, without a public hearing?
And what is the...
Mr. Brown, my motion was to restructure the school board.
But I'm asking the question, how do you have an emergency meeting when you haven't had a public hearing, which needs to go out in the paper? It's not an emergency. Without, you can't, you can't, it's, our attorney clearly says that you cannot approach hold a public hearing prior to expending funds. So you can't expend funds until you have a public hearing. Well...
I think the issue here is not the 60-day thing. It's you explaining it to the rest of the board, just like you did now. But you didn't get back to any of us. We all tried to contact you about this particular item.
And I contacted the superintendent?
But you didn't see any of us, so how do we know that?
But wait a minute. When someone's requesting an illegal meeting...
You're the chair. Why can't you tell them that?
To conduct board business on a $200,000, give or take, contract out of a public meeting?
I get, I get that, Steve.
Okay, but that's not right, Bob.
Couldn't you respond?
I did to the superintendent.
I didn't get anything on that. What did I know?
Why didn't the superintendent respond to you? He clearly says that what was done shouldn't have been done because people were going back and forth on email.
Well, I just find it, Bonnie, you're upset that Steve got angry and in his anger raised his voice and yelled about being able to finish a point. And I've observed you many times want to get through and make your point. And it seems to me that this is all an issue over politeness and control. And it's unfortunate that Steve had his outburst, but I sat here at one time and tried to communicate with the board and some administrators and some staff, and I was yelled at, and I was told to shut up. So where are the differences? Why is this not, why is this not, why are there victims in some instances and no victims in other instances? Why is it a issue to laugh about in some instances and a instance to remove or discredit a board person in this instance? Why is there hypocrisy?
I don't recall that at all.
You don't recall what?
Of somebody else yelling at you.
You don't recall the conversation when I, Mr. Gregwire, I think Mrs. Kolbath had brought up an idea of me wanting to have a meeting with staff and administration about my vision, which I was trying to openly communicate. And this is all about communication. I was trying to explain what I was trying to do and Norma said, "Shut up, Ralph." And it wasn't the nicest way to go about it.
But that's got nothing to do with what we're discussing here and now.
It has everything to do with board member conduct.
Exactly, it does. And it's not just one issue we're addressing. If we want to address the parking lot issue, if we never have a meeting to instruct anybody to do anything, we're not moving forward. And what seems to be happening here is we go around and around and around on a lot of these issues. Nothing gets decided. Nothing gets pushed forward. I am in agreement that it needs to be reorganized. We need to move forward. This is ridiculous. We're stagnating on one issue and just going around and around in a circle. This needs to be done.
It needs to go back out the boot.
There was a...
That's, we're not even discussing, we're not discussing that. We're discussing, we need to move forward. And this isn't the only, the only issue that we're sitting on, Ralph. And it shouldn't come down to personal feelings and it shouldn't come down to the way we feel about things. We need to move forward as a board and it's not happening.
I thought Bonnie for, Bonnie for us.
I guess I have to say that my, the lack of communication with Mr. Brown, and I have to say, Mr. Brown, I know that you have a loud voice, but when you call and scream at me like I'm three, or when you're in the parking lot and you're screaming at other board members, it's not appropriate.
Okay.
And so, so I'm saying I would like to see a change.
Okay, first off, I'll apologize for the last meeting, but that being said, you know, first off, I didn't, I did not yell at you over the phone. I was trying to explain to you that I was having some concerns about what happened November, the day before November 4th. So, and then what happened November 4th, I'm sorry, when, when someone starts asking, and we all know, you're not allowed to, to conduct board business outside of a public meeting. When someone asks the superintendent for an illegal meeting to conduct board business on a $200,000, give or take, contract, to me, that's the start of corruption. And I cannot and will not be part of anything that looks, that smells corrupt and appears that you're staring a bid of $200,000 of other people's money. It's, it wasn't right to ask for an illegal meeting. And I don't know why that happened. And...
Well, I think the issue is board business conduct. And if this board is going to accept the idea that it's okay to pick up the phone and talk to one person on an issue, hang up the phone, pick up the phone, call another member, discuss the same issue, that's the problem.
Whose job is that?
Nobody is supposed to be picking up the phone and having...
Somebody has to have that job.
You can talk about scheduling meetings, but board business has been conducted over the phone. It's obvious.
Well, it's not obvious.
It's obvious when board members pull another board member aside and say, you know...
That's someone over the phone, Ralph.
Two people, two of us have the right to talk and converse and say, "I have this question, this question, and this is the information I have. What do you see?" If we don't talk with our other board members, Ralph, how are we ever going to get anything done?
That's the smoke and mirrors I would, I would want to address because...
Will you explain to me what smoke and mirrors is? Because you, you sometimes talk in circles and I don't always get it. So if you could explain to me what I'm doing when you say smoke and mirrors, I would really appreciate that.
Except when you blow smoke up people's rear ends, you should be looking in the mirror. When you're throwing...
Are you accusing me?
I am saying, Bonnie, that if you're trying, not only, not only was November 4th, whatever happened with that questionable behavior, so was discussing board members' conduct in a non-public meeting, which was all your idea. And so is coming out of a non-public meeting and making an announcement that wasn't even discussed in a non-public meeting. You know, you're sitting here trying to convince everybody on this board and everybody in this public meeting that, that board members are not being above board, and you're, you're doing it yourself. And the problem is...
Mr. Brown, I came in this morning, on this afternoon for this meeting, a couple minutes earlier, and Bob and Ralph were discussing this portion of the agenda 20 minutes before the meeting started.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, actually.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
What were, what were we discussing?
You were discussing Bonnie and you were discussing school board member performance. And you said that she has a control issue and wants to control the board.
Absolutely, yeah.
Well, what's the difference if you're doing it right here?
There's no difference.
Before the meeting, we're on the phone or through email.
We, we can do that. We, can't we? Can we do that? Can I talk to you about something? Can I talk to you about something? Can I talk to you about something? Why can't we do that? We're two, we're not three.
But two were trying to convince a third into...
It wasn't a thought, Ralph, it was a thought that didn't happen to be a...
It wasn't even a thought. It was a, we needed to ask a question and we needed Mr. Brown to hear it. It didn't matter if it was me or if it was Bob, but we needed him to listen to something because it was something that we wanted his opinion on.
Well, I didn't have a piece of information, which I explained to you tonight, I didn't have a piece of information that I wanted to know. So I asked him to come over with me to the side. We did. Bob Adams happened to come through the door when that happened. All I asked was one question and I got an answer. And all I said is, I got my answer. That's as far as that went. Nobody told me anything different than that.
But that was after the request.
It was.
That was after the request to have the illegal meeting.
It's not a request to have an illegal meeting. Sometimes you have to ask. You don't know everything.
Superintendent Terzis?
At least she asked Mr. Terzis that question.
I asked. I didn't do it. I asked.
Right, because it's a quorum. You can't, you can't have a quorum.
But I'm saying, at least she asked. You didn't do it.
I asked.
And I want to weigh. And then you came over after the superintendent said, "You really shouldn't, you can't do that because that's a quorum of the law."
Absolutely. Once he said that, I...
Once he said it, we knew it.
And then you came over and talked to me and then you said, what you said was, "Me and Bonnie had been talking."
Here, at that time.
Yep.
It wasn't on the phone.
What you said was, "Me and Bonnie have been talking." There was a pause and then it was not, not too much. And I jokingly said, "Yeah, right, whatever." Then, then you questioned, you had two questions. You said, or two comments, if you will. You said first that Ralph's bid was late. I said, "I know for a fact it wasn't late." As a matter of fact, I think it was like maybe three or four days early.
Okay, I heard you say that.
Right. And then, and then you said that Ralph's bid was incomplete. I said, "I have never heard that." That's when Bob Adams came over.
That's the piece of information that I heard that night. So I wanted to hear that.
That's when Bob Adams walked in. We come over and he said, "Yes, Ralph's bid was incomplete." Then, then you said...
I have my answer.
"We, we're concerned how we look and me and Bonnie are voting for ex-contractor."
I never said that. I never said that.
You absolutely did.
I never said that.
You said that you...
Let me tell you something, Steve. I would never vote anybody, I think my own person here, no one's going to tell me how to vote. Like I told Ralph earlier tonight, I don't know you, 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 or you before this, before I go on the school board. I don't hang around the town. All the rest of you guys do live here. Of course, I live here, but, but I don't deal with, I don't deal with anything. Nobody calls me unless you call me usually. You call me to stuff. If she don't call me, she don't call me. The only time I got a call from her was to try to call you, which I did twice. Your cell phone and your home phone.
I got it once, November 7th.
I got it on my cell phone to show that I called both those numbers.
Well, I got it, one day. You called me once on my cell phone, November 7th.
But you didn't call me back.
What am I supposed to do, Bob?
You're the chair. I want to ask you a question.
When people are asking to do something illegal, you gotta be careful. I can't, I cannot get, I cannot get involved in, you're talking about $200,000 of other people's money.
So you're, so you're saying I did something illegal?
I don't know, Bob.
And you're saying I did something illegal?
What you told me is that you and, you're concerned how you, you appear and you and Bonnie were voting for ex-contract.
I never said that. I never said that. Never crossed my mind. Never crossed my mind. What I wanted to know was, was his bid complete? He told me no. And I, all I said was, I got my answer. That's how I was going to vote.
Mr. Brown, I have a point of order. How did we reschedule this meeting from Wednesday night? This is, would have been a normal like Wednesday night meeting. Did we meet and reschedule this meeting or is this an emergency meeting or?
Bonnie wanted Bob here to be able to vote on this issue.
I couldn't come Wednesday.
Bonnie, you want it?
I just, I was curious what the process was.
You're the one who set up the agenda, Bonnie.
Do you understand that as, when our chair would not communicate with anybody, other board members contacted me and I was asked by them to put stuff on the agenda. So please don't throw fingers at me and it's not all about me, Mr. Fogg. Sometimes I listen to my other board members who are contacting me. That's my job when the chair doesn't do his.
Don't do mine. I responded to the superintendent the following day.
That's wonderful, but the superintendent is not your fellow chairpeople and you have to communicate with us.
And it clearly states, board members or, or the superintendent and the policy, so...
All right, I have a motion on the table.
Let's continue the discussion.
Yeah, yes, I do. I want to continue this.
Bonnie, you say there's no smoke and mirrors. What's the issue that you've disclosed to school board members, including myself and members of the public, about me not being able to provide a competitive bid because I constantly underbid projects and I affect your family business because of that?
That's personal and I'm not going to discuss it, Ralph, and you know that. And you and I have...
It's integrity and it's honesty, Bonnie. Let's put it on the table. Let's put it on the table.
It really doesn't have anything to do with school board.
It has nothing to do with this.
Absolutely, it has. I understand what you're saying, Ralph, but it doesn't have anything to do with school board.
If Bonnie is willing to smoke and mirrors one issue, will she smoke and mirrors another issue?
Ralph, you and I had already had a one-hour discussion on this.
No, we did not.
In the Milton library that night, we must...
We didn't spend an hour. We didn't spend an hour.
20 minutes?
Bonnie, what was the result of the, you said, "Yes." I'll figure out who told you.
I know who told you. And you know what, Ralph? I didn't tell any lies.
All right.
I'm not telling any lies. I said, "There are times in business that maybe things aren't done appropriately." Ralph, if you know, the issue's going on, and I don't know what you have against me, Ralph, I really don't know. Other than the fact, you know what? The only one that's smoke and mirrors is, the only thing that I remember you saying is when the accusations are against you, let's see how you feel. At a meeting a few meetings ago.
This doesn't even...
This is personal, your dealings with us on a personal level for business is nothing to do with this. And Ralph, we all sat at that meeting and we all...
It pertains to the idea...
Absolute and done.
It doesn't have anything to do with us.
We have a pecuniary interest in the whole process.
Why? Are you gonna, Ralph, I don't think that you've had issues or dealings with our family for years and that's a personal issue. It has nothing to do with my school board integrity and I will not allow it to become part of it.
Why wouldn't she want, why wouldn't she or anybody else, Ralph, want to take your bid? Why wouldn't you?
If her, if her family's subject to financial...
Why would my family be subject to financial ruin?
That's what you said, Bonnie. It wasn't what I said.
It is not. And whoever told you in that specific way was not saying any... And whoever told you in that specific way was not seeing anything clearly.
Well, either that, or they're now wearing two faces.
Ralph?
The problem, Bonnie, is that-
The problem is, it's personal.
That's right, and I have nothing personal against you, Ralph, and all of the board members, except Mr. Brown, who wouldn't speak with me, know that. Because I've told them.
The problem is, how many times do you do one thing and then attack somebody else for doing what may appear to be the same thing?
I'm not gonna sit here and be intimidated by something that I said, and I clearly told you that I did, Ralph. We sat and had a conversation about it. I said it, I agreed with it. It has nothing to do with my school board position. It is personal with my father and you, and I don't wanna know anything else about it.
You know all about it, Bonnie, and it does have something to do with the school board business, because if you believe your family is subject to financial ruin by somebody-
She's one person. I told her, she's one person, Ralph.
Let me finish my statement, please.
Jeez.
You don't want me to yell like Mr. Brown?
You won't yell, no.
The fact that you had that concern, you probably should've recused yourself from the whole bid process, yourself.
I think it's, it's two separate matters, Ralph.
It's not two separate matters, if it affects the way you behave, it's not a separate issue.
Ralph, I am very much an adult, and I know how to, how to act maturely and how to make a clear decision. I can take the facts, I can make a decision, and Ralph, because you and I have business history together, does not make a difference in this school board matter.
What are you gonna, Bob?
The way I see it is, I think, and I'm gonna speak to you, Mr. Brown, that I think you're very knowledgeable, uh, for the school board, for the town. You, you, you study a lot, you dig into things, um, but I think you have an issue with people over the last two years that I've sat on this board with you. This is what I've seen. You, you get out of control, and I know you, I know you're loud, Stephen, I know you don't mean anything by it, and I accept that. But when you start taking apart somebody, you know, I'm not gonna name a bunch of names, but to start taking apart somebody for the way you feel, and if they feel completely different, if they don't go your way, you get upset about that. And, and we're here as five individuals to vote five different ways, if that's the case. You know, vote the way you feel. You need to accept that. You don't accept that. On, on a lot of issues, you don't accept it. That's, that's why I think that you have a problem with being the chair. I liked you being the chair the first year, I thought it went very well, actually. Then it's, it's getting out of control. We look like freaking idiots to them. Idiots.
To that point, and I know, I'm constantly interrupted. I've tried to let people, instead of, instead of dumbing it down through common call and going, "Making everybody be recognized, may I speak, please?" I've tried to let it, and that's probably my fault, because I cannot finish a complete sentence without the vice chair interrupting me. And then, Ms. Joy-
You can't pull them aside, talk to them?
Bob, every single meeting?
Pull them aside, you're the chair.
I shouldn't have to.
But you can, we're adults.
But here's the same, she's talking about, Bonnie's talking about the same thing that I'm doing, and she's doing the same thing. It's the double standard. And then, Mrs. Joy mentioned something. Mrs. Joy does the same thing to me. She gives you that.
Well, well, I think, I think that, Steve, is 'cause we're trying to be friends with each other here, and trying to be, get along with each other. Again, we're all adults. If you have an issue with somebody, talk to them. You know, why, why do we need to do this? Why are we wasting, why are we wasting time doing this? You know, I really, this really bothers me, you know?
I have to.
I don't want stepping off this board, because I don't wanna be part of this. I don't wanna be part of this crap. You know, this is, this is getting out, way out of hand. And, and do I think we need to be organized? Yes, I think we do too. But I don't wanna be chair, I made that perfectly clear, that I don't wanna be chair. I'm not asking to be chair. I think you do a fine job, you just need to control how you treat people.
So we're gonna put, we're gonna put a chair that's ready to, to, to ask for an illegal meeting and conduct board business on a $200,000?
Who said that?
Who said what, Bob?
We're putting Bonnie in as chair. That's what you're just saying.
Well, that's what I'm, you just said you don't wanna be chair, I don't-
I'm looking at her.
Oh, okay. It's-
We need to move the-
I'm just saying, we're getting out of control of this, and we're, we're just wasting our time doing this.
Did you have your hand up?
I, I haven't, I haven't, but second thinking it.
And I apologized to everybody, too.
Me too.
It's a shame that we care more about what, what the appearance is than what we're actually getting done.
No, it's both.
We're not getting anything done.
I missed the question that's on-
It is a shame.
And I asked him the question.
And, and that's, basically, the IRP was the real problem behind the whole thing. And it needs to go back out to bed.
Well, Mr. Tercey was probably right then when he said it would cut, it would wreak havoc with the board.
I missed that conversation there.
Bonnie, would you, sorry, I don't wanna overspeak. Bonnie, would you reconsider your motion? Would you reconsider it?
For what?
Keeping Steve as chair?
No.
The thing, the thing that I see here, just like you're saying, the thing I see here is you have people that are afraid of you, Steve. Intimidated and afraid of you.
Don't count me out of that, because I'm not-
I'm not talking to you, and I'm not afraid of you.
That's not the intent, it's just, you know, hello. This is what, it's gonna be about eight years now, counting all that?
I could ask every single person in this, sitting at this table there, if they're intimidated by you. Every one of them, I guarantee you'll say yes.
I mean.
Except you and me, 'cause I'm not.
That's not the intent.
It's not the intent, but that's what you, to, to put out here, and you-
But that's not the intent of it, Bob. That's not what my intent behind it is.
And we do the same thing with the, with the joint board, it's, it's the, it's the, the way you come across, of how you feel, that you just, you, you blow up at people, and it's, that's-
Well, the joint board, I mean, we, we, we need to get rid of the joint board.
That's, but that's another story. Ralph?
It just goes down to the fact that when we act, that somebody's gonna react. And if you can't act in a polite mode, if you can't respect someone sitting and trying to take their time and make a point, then you can't expect that person to react any differently. I mean, if, if I keep interrupting Steve, he's gonna eventually tell me to shut up.
Hopefully.
Hopefully. It's act, react.
Act.
React. So let's not start trouble and then claim to be a victim as soon as trouble comes back at you.
But can't, can't we talk? If something, if something bothers you, can't you tell me that?
Really?
Not over the phone, I, I, I hope now how many times I pick up-
Can't you tell me after a meeting, Bob, you know, you kinda embarrassed me a little bit. I would do that to you, Ralph. I would do that to you, Steve.
That's what I tried to do with Bonnie, and she just took-
Let me tell you something, I don't hang around, I don't hang around after meetings. If you see, I pick up my stuff and I leave, 'cause I don't wanna be part of this crap out in the parking lot or anywhere else. You know, and I think I'm doing the right thing, you know? Because we're here grabbing in the parking lot, or talking in the parking lot, this and that, in meetings. You know, I'm coming at five o'clock from now on to my meetings, and I'm leaving right away. You know, because I don't wanna be part of this stuff. Again, we're adults, we should be able to tell each other how we feel, we're one board. We're, we're, we should be a whole, but we should vote the way you feel, without anybody else intimidating you, or, or telling you how to vote, or calling you up on the phone, if you wanna say, and say, you know, "I have this information." But I'll tell you something, Ralph, if I don't have a piece of information and I don't know about it, I'm gonna ask. And that's what I did with Mr. Adams that day. I didn't know that. I didn't know any of that. And that's all, that's, that's all I wanted to know.
I appreciate that. I also appreciate my past experiences, picking up a phone, not asking for a phone call, picking up a phone, being told how I'm gonna decide things in the, you know, at the next meeting coming up. I've experienced, I know other people on this board have experienced the same thing. So again, you can't act in a certain way and not expect somebody to react in an opposite way, if they don't appreciate the action to begin with.
I told you guys all how I feel. You know, I, I just think that we need to get back together again and go on with this whole thing, go on with the parking lot thing, and just get back as a school board, like we should be. We're gonna elect it to do.
Right.
Mr. Brown, communication with you is vital, and it's very difficult to, to converse with you, and-
No, it's not. Bonnie, once the, the only time that you, is this issue here, and I didn't know what to do, because what was asked of the superintendent on November 4th, that was not legal.
Darling, we've all pulled each other aside and asked-
Wait a minute, please don't call me darling.
No, I shouldn't, that's right. Mr. Brown?
Please, don't, no, no, but can I just-
People pull each other aside, that's how we get information.
That's why I tried to call you before the meeting to express my, that I was having difficulty with the request to conduct board business on a $200,000, give or take, contract outside of a public meeting, because we all know that that would be illegal. But the request was still made. It's not right, Bonnie. It looks, it smells like it's corrupt, and it appears that now we're staring the bid.
And I have to say that, Mr. Brown, from sitting in my view, some of the comments that you've made, and I don't wanna, they're probably non-public comments because they're in regards to the other bidders. Some of the things that you've said makes me wonder if you're in cahoots with Mr. Fogg. And so, I have to say, there are questions and concerns that we all have to ask, and it's okay for us to ask that.
Yeah, and so-
But when, when you can't say, we all have questions and concerns.
But you can't ask for an illegal meeting.
An illegal meeting is, we need you to hear this information.
But you know you can't do that, Bob.
How else do we say, "You need to get information," if we don't, one of us doesn't pull him aside and say, "You need to hear this"?
There's nothing wrong with two board members having a conversation.
Exactly.
How about three on November 4th, Mr. Tercey?
Three would not have been right.
If three are together having a conversation, that is wrong. That's a quorum.
That's my point.
But it didn't happen because we asked.
But it didn't happen.
Or she asked.
But the intent, why did you-
No, I was asked to go out and get you.
By who?
Bob.
Okay, and when I walked in-
I should've sat down, and I didn't. I said, "We need to talk to him."
No, you sat down where you normally sat, and then I was standing over in the, probably right behind Nate. And when you turned to the superintendent and said, "Michael, can me and Bob talk to Steve?" I walked away.
She said that.
I walked away, because that would be illegal.
I said, "No, no." And so you went and talked to Bob, so there was nothing illegal there. We needed you to hear information, Mr. Brown. Whether it came from me, or it came from Mr. Ola, we needed you to hear information. And we, and if we can't communicate with you any other way, then we have to snag you at a meeting and say, "We need to tell you this, we need to talk to you about this."
But the superintendent just told you that that would be illegal.
Was it illegal what happened that night, sir?
Nope.
Okay.
No, but the request, that's my point. If you're willing-
That wasn't illegal, that was a question.
Well, no, the request for the illegal-
We didn't think, Steve. I mean, give us a freaking break.
When everybody knows that you can't have a quorum of the board conducting school board business outside of a public meeting, especially on, on a contract. Everybody knows that, you can't do that. But the request was made, and that's where-
Was it malicious?
I, well, whatever it was, but it's still illegal, and-
You're making some really severe accusations that we tried to do something illegal and malicious, and we didn't.
Mr. Tercey, after the, the question was posed to you, was there the same question repeated in a different way, like, "Isn't there a way we can get around those rules, or isn't there something we can do?" That question was imposed to you afterwards?
No, it was a straightforward question, my answer was straightforward.
Why'd you ask that question, Ralph?
No, because that's what, there was, it wasn't straightforward. There was, I, I watched, I, I watched the conversation back and forth.
Perception is very different on this board.
There, there was discussion about the illegal meeting.
And actually, the reason that I wanted to talk with you, because the information I wanted, I didn't know if you had. That was my intent of talking with you.
I only had half of it, because I never heard that, you know, the other half of it.
Well, I, I, like I said, I, I just, what I wanted to hear, I got my answer from it. And when you got it, did that enlighten you a little bit?
I, I, I don't know if I can believe it.
Oh my God, Steve, come on, why are you saying that?
The IRP is so messed up, come on, you have to admit.
Okay, so, is that, is that your fault?
No, it's not.
Is that my fault?
Nope.
Is that his fault?
Well, it's whoever wrote the IRP.
We're fighting as board members over something stupid, as an IRP that had nothing to do, nothing to do with it.
Nothing to do with the five of us at all, other than the fact that we approved it, and something came through, and it wasn't right, and we had, we needed clarification on it.
But you can't do that illegally, Bonnie.
All right, let's forget about that side of it.
It's not the only issue, no, no. Let's just move this forward, this is what we do when we go round in circles. Let's move this forward, because it wasn't the only issue that Bonnie, Bonnie brought up. So we need to stop this and just continue.
And that goes both ways, I mean-
And I understand that, Mr. Brown, but that was, it doesn't all stem from that, from what I got from Bonnie's-
But I'm saying it's a double standard.
What I'm saying is, it doesn't all stem from the parking lot thing. Again, we're going round in circles. We need to move forward, and it's not happening. And this is a huge, huge, we've all said what we needed to say on this. Move forward.
And I, all I'm saying in response, that there's a double standard.
And that's fine.
Because what Mrs. Seer is saying, there's six items, I mean, she does things on her own all the time.
That, again, that's, that's not the only-
That's accusatory, and I don't-
You don't do any-
What do I do on my own?
I'd like to know what, actually.
What do I do on my own without consulting the rest of you?
I bought a water, Wakefield School Board Scholarship Fund.
What? What the hell are you talking about?
Did we all discuss the-
Is it in the minute? Can you, do you have the minutes where the board voted?
What are you talking about?
Let's, let's-
No, I wanna know. What are you talking about?
Do we normally do that, though?
Well, it is a school board, but-
But I'm saying, every year, do we normally do that? Unlike me, though.
That was the first year that I-
What are you talking about? I awarded a scholarship?
Bonnie, you were the only school board member in this whole, this, everything-
But she didn't award it. Who made the award of the scholarship, Mr. Tercey?
Who was going to receive it, the school board?
No, I did not. You are absolutely out of line, Mr. Fogg. The board had a set committee, and there was a set process in place. And I happened to be the board member that year that stood up and said I had time to read them. So whatever you're saying, you are very misguided, young man. That's not right, and I would like to know what, I would like to know what else you're telling me. What else do I do on my own without conversing with you?
Well, there's, for example, November 4th, when we're at the budget, you, you made the direction that the Wakefield School Board would accept all government funding. The superintendent turned around, put pen to paper, and added the $1.5 million in government funding into the budget and reported back as to what that, how that $1.5 million in government funding represented in the budget as a percentage.
What are you talking about? For me to say, "Mr. Brown, you've come to us and said you wanted to take absolutely no federal funding whatsoever, is what you said your goal was, and that was fine, and I asked, is the money included in the budget?" And your response was?
No, it's not, not until the board directed me a budget.
And so your response was, what was the increase to the taxpayers without that money? Seventeen percent?
Seventeen percent.
And you know what? He didn't do that. It was a meeting. It's okay for me to say, is this-
But you directed.
I directed?
Yes, Bonnie, you went, the Wakefield School Board, and you put your arm out like that, "We'll accept all government funding." Can you show me the minutes of the standing-
Have we had a second meeting yet?
There's the inter, see, I mean, can you show me the minutes of the standing committee, the grant review committee, or minutes of the board where either, where there was a recommendation from the standing grant review committee or the board that the board took action to accept all government funding?
Were we not all at that meeting?
The, the question was posed, are we accepting, we never made the decision to not accept federal funding. We never made the decision to not accept federal funding. Bonnie never directed anybody to put anything in there. She asked the question. The board has not voted on that, so I don't know what you're saying. She directed anything.
She directed... She said, "The Wakefield School Board will accept all government funding." The superintendent immediately took action and added that... I watched him. He put pen to paper and did a mathematical equation on the paper and reported it back as a percentage.
Mr. Brown, I have the right to ask that question.
You directed him, and then he took action on your direction.
Ask him if he did.
I watched him!
Then ask him if he did.
Did you?
No. I did not.
You didn't do a mathematical equation and represent and report that back as a percentage?
Mrs. Seer asked me what the percentage would be if we put $1.5 million in. So, I took the bottom line of the proposed budget, added the $1.5 to get the calculation. I didn't make any adjustments to the proposed budget. I took the bottom line, put another $1.5 million in there, and then did the calculation for the percentage.
Can you show me minutes of the standing grant review committee or minutes of the board where the board took action to do that?
To provide a percentage?
No, to put the money back into the budget.
But the... Their money is not in the budget, Mr. Brown.
It's not in the numbers you... I gotta present to the budget committee?
You could see this evening, I presented you your packet from Wednesday. Now, you see, looking at a 0.6% decrease that I'm proposing for next year. So...
I don't... And what... Okay, so you don't want me asking questions of any of my other board members? You don't want me asking questions at any work sessions or at any meetings? Is there anything else you'd like me not to do, Mr. Brown?
I never said that, so I'd appreciate if you'd put words in my mouth.
That's what you're saying?
No, it's not what I said.
So, how would you like me to conduct my getting informational materials, Mr. Brown?
Well, you can't do it on your own, Bonnie.
I believe that's what one of our ethics is, is that we're supposed to inform ourselves correctly on our own.
But you're not supposed to act as an individual.
And I don't believe I did that by asking what the percentage would be.
No. It's not the only thing, Bonnie.
I'd like to know what else, then, Mr. Brown.
Can we... Can I be out in the public and somebody come to me and ask me a question? Can that happen?
Yeah.
Can I respond to that?
Certain thing.
As one person?
Certain thing. I mean, you can't... You're not supposed to, you know, respond to non-public information, but...
All right. I get that. So, like, when Ralph had a little communication with some teachers, he's allowed to do that? To set up something?
I think I was told to not go rogue.
No, I'm not talking about that, Ralph. Forget that. That's just somebody else saying that. That wasn't me saying that. So, what you did by getting some teachers together to maybe have a meeting...
It never happened.
It never happened because it ended because somebody talked about it. But I'm saying, that's okay to do, right?
Well, in my opinion, I thought it would be a good idea to try to open up a line of communication with everybody in the building. And I would do that everywhere I go.
I thought that was a good idea, personally. Then I heard a date that was set.
And that date came out of the... I didn't...
Then, my thought was, is the date passed you? And you said you didn't do that. You have to think about what people... This is just getting thrown all the way around. Everybody makes up their own little story, and it all comes back to one thing. Ralph did this. He set a date. We're all gonna know, but the rest of the board didn't know. I was upset about that. You know? Upset that you did that. Upset that it all came back to saying Ralph's doing this all by himself. Same thing with you, Bonnie. If you're in your house and you're having a conversation with somebody, you're okay to do that.
I am. And it says in the Board of Ethics that I have the right to become informed concerning issues to be considered at those meetings.
So, we're getting it thrown back in all of our faces that you can't do that.
Yeah, because we do want our job.
Well, there's a double standard. Yeah, there's clearly a double standard.
Well, Bonnie, can you tell me who made the decision on the oak trees out there on the parking lot, the removal of the two big oak trees up by Ms. Casperonis's house? Who directed those to come down?
There was a group of us up there.
Pick me! Pick me! I can answer that.
I'd just like to hear from Bonnie. I mean, Holly or from you?
Well, I was there.
Yeah, I know you were.
And those trees... The way I got this was, those trees were the original plan to come down. You said that somebody was complaining that they didn't want those trees taken down, right?
Right.
You looked at both of us. I didn't say a word. She said, "Is it in the original IRP plan?" And you said, "Yes." She said, "Take them down."
Well, I think I also stated that Joe and I and the guy cutting the timber felt as though it was a good measure of naval leak consideration to leave them there. I think I advocated...
But I think also it said that there's a lot of wood there, too.
Also, it was said that someone was losing $1,200 on wood and that one of the trees was gonna have to be limbed all the way up one side and cut a little bit because of the pole and that it...
We're really nitpicking little issues here.
We're really nitpicking because I...
I get what you're saying, Ralph. I really do. But we're really nitpicking each other here with stupid stuff.
We were all there. It wasn't... I was going by what the original...
So, if you really had a concern about that, Ralph...
You shouldn't have done it.
Nothing against you, but if you really had a concern about it, you should've came back into the meeting and said... Or next meeting and said, "You know, we talked about this. What should we do now?" That's my opinion.
Yeah, you can't swing that around on me personally, Ralph, when all of us were...
My concern was the person who became a victim had the belief right up... Maybe still believes today that that was done out of spite on my part.
Well, that's... There would...
Have you ever taken the step towards the owner of the abutting property and said, "You know what? I made it clear that those trees had to come down." Have you ever made that step?
No, I went in to pay my taxes, and I was told that I independently had told you that it better be down before the next meeting. And that's not anyone's...
There were a few other comments, too, Bonnie.
Well, Ralph, I... We had said to go by the original...
All right.
You're nitpicking, Ralph.
I'm only trying to point out...
No, you're nitpicking. It's not two faces, Ralph, because the situation that you have going on with the person on the abutting property has nothing to do with me. And I'm sorry, but it has nothing to do with me. And I don't know what's going on, and I don't wanna know. I made decisions. We made decisions based on the information that we had.
So, the bottom line here is, what I see is, we need a change. We need a change in the chair. No one's asking you to leave the board, Steve, but I think that we need to change it around a little bit to see how the next person can take the chair and how they can run with that. It may be no different. It may be no different because you're gonna be sitting on the sideline. You know, I don't see any difference in this at all to myself. But I think that we need to give this a shot. And I agree with Bonnie and her that we need to change this. But, you know, I'm making it perfectly clear that I'm not running for the seat at all. So, unless one of you two decide, she said no, that you wanna be chair, then I'm not voting anyway at all.
We can't... No, you have to vote for a chair. You just can't elect yourself, I don't believe, so...
Well, I mean...
Well, there's a motion on the floor to restructure. A lot of communication afterwards. And maybe the motion was made so that we could communicate.
That was a good motion, then.
Did you ever get a second?
I did.
It was?
Yes.
You seconded?
I seconded.
Okay. Motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. But we can't do that without a chair.
What do you mean?
Who's gonna run for chair?
I'll take chair.
That's why.
Okay. I'm voting against the motion, myself.
I make the motion to nominate Norma Joy as Chair of the School Board.
I'll second it.
Like, you're gonna have to call that one, Mr. Jersey?
Just call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I say aye?
I think you might wanna abstain, but I don't know.
She can vote for herself.
She can vote for herself.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Take over.
Switch seats.
No, I'm not switching seats tonight.
Next item on the agenda, guys. Let me get there. Okay, old business, the parking lot.
Gotta go back out to bid.
Mr. Jersey, what's... What do we need to do now? Do we need to set up a hearing before we award a bid? Or what do we need to do? Tell me where we need to go.
You currently have three bids that have already been submitted. You would have to reject those bids if you're gonna go out with a new bidding process and make sure that the bidders are notified that the bids were rejected.
Okay.
For the reason of going back out to bid.
If we don't, um, if we decide to go with one of the bidders that we have on the table, where do we go? Do we have to set a hearing? How does that work?
We would notify the bidder of the award. And at that point, we'd start conversations with that... With the bidder. What we would have to do next is, we have to talk about putting together a warrant that will bring us up to the total amount for the bid, because we currently only have $75,000 to do that. We can award the bid with a contract that states specifically that the remainder of the funds will be based on appropriation by the voters in this March vote.
Ralph, put his hand up first.
I was just curious how this awarding of a bill would go back to the October 15th motion that was discussed at our last meeting of starting over. That motion was affirmed by four members of the board, and I probably would've voted for it myself if I hadn't... It was an unanimous vote. And I had not witnessed or... Not picking up the phone, I hadn't heard anything about not starting over. I didn't see a motion to reconsider. I didn't see a new motion by any board members or a second, not to start over. So, I'm just curious, how do we ignore, Madam Chair, how do we ignore a motion that was voted on and move forward?
We had a workshop that you were part, only there part of the night, because the rest of the night you recluse yourself. We did have a workshop. We went to Bob Adams with a number of different questions. He answered our questions. We had further discussion, and at the end of that meeting, the board members in attendance said we were going to bring it to the next meeting to vote on. We didn't say... We said we had enough information to move forward with what we had. We were gonna bring it to the table to move forward with it. We did not say we were gonna go out for new IRPs. We said we had enough information, that we felt comfortable with the information that we had, moving forward. Okay, go ahead.
So, any potential bidders? I won't be part of the bidding process, so I think I can talk about this. Any other potential bidders in town who were awaiting an opportunity to bid according to the motion, they're out of luck? Is that...
Well, based on the information that we got at the workshop, we had all agreed to move forward, to stop stalling this, to move forward with this project. And I think, at this point in time, with what we have and the fact that the numbers are already out there, we need to take what we have, award the bid, do what we need to do, and move forward with this project.
I disagree. I think that with the new information of what I asked Mr. Adams at the November 4th meeting, changes my mind a little bit, because it almost seems to me that this just got all messed up with this RFP being so confusing that it went from this way to a new way to what you needed for information. And, you know, again, I'm not blaming any board member. I'm not blaming you, Bob, but I'm not blaming any board members for this. But I think it's so messed up. We need to start again. You know, and I don't... It needs to be fair across the board. And I don't think, at this point, it's fair. And it's fit to Ralph or the other two, or anybody else that's out there can do this. You know, we did say that. We did say that. We made a motion, and I seconded that motion. So, with, you know, Mr. Adams, with all his information that he has, is it lack of information that we don't get? I don't know. But I didn't have that piece of information. If I had that from the beginning, I would've said we only had two bidders. That's how it would... Would've went down for me anyways. So, I personally feel that this... We just can't make a vote tonight. That's just how I feel.
What was the rush with the emergency?
To talk about it.
Because we didn't... He didn't have the information, or did you not have the information for the meeting? Or... Or we wanted to clear the matter up, Mr. Brown.
But you...
You didn't have the information.
We wanted to clear the matter up.
You cannot award the bid tonight. Our attorney clearly says that it needs to have, you have to have a public hearing. The public hearing hasn't hap, it has to go in the newspaper.
I don't think he's...
It's right, I have it right here.
No, I'm just saying, I don't think you're listening to what Bob is saying.
Right, you're not listening to what Bob is saying.
What was it saying?
That we don't feel comfortable, or at least I don't feel comfortable. I think we need to go back out.
Oh, yeah, as long as it goes back out, then, yeah.
But if it doesn't, you can't be upset. But I'm just saying, because I'm only one person, but...
No, I can be. With what happened on November 4th, yeah, I can be.
All right, stop, stop. Ralph, go ahead.
I'm just, and maybe Judy's gonna be a source of information on this. When you develop an article for the warrant, and it asks the voters to raise and appropriate certain funds, and during a deliberative session, there's discussion on the certain article for the warrant, isn't that considered one public hearing? Maybe not the only public hearing necessary, but wouldn't that discussion at a deliberative session be considered part, step one of a public hearing?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Jersey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The reference to the public hearing is to request monies from the trust, trustees for the project. That's the public hearing that's being referred to in that. So, once we begin the project and start getting billed for the project to request the funds, that's when the public hearing comes into play. So we have $75,000 in a trust fund to go toward the parking lot. When we're ready to spend that money, we have a public hearing in order to do so. But we currently are not ready to spend that money because we don't have the full allotment for the total project. Hence, the original... My original suggestion was to put it all as one package, so you know what the total cost is going to be. And then you can phase it in possibly through warrants or bond, either or. But right now, we have a starting point of $75,000. It's clearly not enough. But we haven't established what we need to ask for from the voters in this, this March vote to finish the job. So I, I also agree that we should start fresh from the beginning. Do not fragment it along the way. Go with the one, go with one bid. Have somebody that is considered a project manager to oversee the entire process and move forward. So we could do this over a summer and have a parking lot. But we can't fragment it, because it takes time, and it eventually is gonna cost more.
I just have a question. So, we have three bidders. One of them knew about the $75,000. Did the other two know that we only had a portion of their money that they were bidding on?
Not that I know of.
Should, should they know that?
That's why I said...
I'm not sure if that was part of the conversation.
But I'm saying, if they, if they awarded the bid, and they start the job and get a portion of it and saying, "We're not gonna get the rest of it, sorry," I'd be pissed off.
And that's why, that's why we phased it, Bob.
And I think that should be in the other thing.
Ralph?
If Phase One, which would include certain things, goes out with the RFP, and people bid on that, with the clear understanding that the old RFP asked for a maximum guaranteed price. And I think that that was an attempt by the school district to give the voters in the next round of voting what the final figure would be on the paving and all of that stuff. So I, I don't know if we failed to communicate everything, you know, what our limits were. And I don't think the, the limits are $75,000. I think that that might be garnished already. But my, my thought is that looking for the big project, you know, doing the old, the whole thing at once, getting a number for that, the time it takes to do that, doesn't the $75,000 that was raised and appropriated from last year's unspent fund balance, doesn't that money go back to the taxpayers if it isn't encumbered?
You established it as a trust for the parking lot.
An expendable trust, right? Not a capital reserve fund.
It's there.
It can stay there?
It can stay. The original warrant article to buy the land, the money couldn't be kept because it was just a straight purchase. It was to raise and appropriate and buy it that year. This is an expendable trust.
And those monies can stay in that fund?
Yep.
Just like all of our other funds. So what we need to do is build that fund up to complete the entire project. But we, we need to establish what is the total cost of the project.
Do you have more?
I was just... My thought process, knowing that I'm not gonna be involved in the bidding process, I guess one question that I have, did the school board keep the conceptual design? I mean, the first step in my mind would be, whatever plan you adopted or wanted, make sure, I believe it'll pass through a engineer's approval process. Would that go out to bid? I mean, an engineer could give you a stamp for anywhere between $2,000 to $5,000 or more, depending on the depth of the project that you ask him to do. Should that part go out for an RFP?
Yes, Mr. Brown.
It was my understanding through this wonderful process that that was gonna be borne by the winning...
Contractor, yes. That's, that's the understanding from all the bids that we had. Bob, Bonnie. Yeah, that was our, all of our understanding. So, I think we're all in agreement that it all needs to go out for bid. And we need to tweak the RFP a little bit.
A lot?
A lot.
A lot.
Go ahead.
The RFP needs to be clarified. It needs to be straightened out prior to going out to bid.
Yes, definitely. Go ahead, Mr. Jersey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Keep in mind, the RFP was originally drafted and approved by a previous board through our current district attorney. So the RFP wording, it has what's required in it. The only, the only piece that might need to be tweaked is the wording for the project itself, the specifics of that.
Steve?
No, I would totally disagree with that, Superintendent Jersey, because that RFP directs a bidder to come up with a plan, their own plan, based on the plan that was approved by the school board. So, that, that's not correct. It, it shouldn't be directing people to create their own plan off the school board's plan.
Go ahead.
And that's, that's the wording that needs to be changed. It's the all, it's basically the meat of the RFP that doesn't need a lot of changing. But the, our, our specifics for what we're requesting should be changed. And that's something that we should do first before we...
Before we send it out.
Move forward.
Mr. Brown?
I would have to disagree with that once again, because by the RFP, the number one thing, excuse me, that the town was concerned about was storm water management. By that RFP, storm water management is not addressed until Phase Three, which is beyond the $75,000 that we have allocated to do. So the RFP neat, needs to be gone over. It needs, needs some clarification, some corrections, before it goes back out to bid.
And now that we know that from the planning board, we can certainly put that into an earlier phase, so we can address the issue. Bonnie?
I guess I'm at the point now that I think that we need to look at the two plans that we have, the one that we got initially from Harriman, the one that we got from Mr. Fogg that seconded, that got approved. I think that we need to send, I think we really need to consider sending that out, have it designed, have it stamped, and have anybody that's gonna bid, have them all bid on the same plan. Because it's just a lot of rigmarole. You have to have some form of consensus of like, and whatever conceptual one we take. But it's like, having someone bounce from this plan to that, and ideas and individuality is great, but how do you take that to the taxpayers? That we need more on something we don't even have designed yet.
We need a definite plan, Ralph.
If the RFP was clear to begin with, you wouldn't have got a second design.
We're aware of that. Mr. Brown?
I thought we, we, we just all were in agreement that it needs to go, that, I'm sorry. We were all in agreement that whoever was awarded the bid would take care of the engineering staff. Getting that, getting the plan engineered. We, we just all agreed to that.
Right, we did.
So now, now we're gonna, now we, I don't know.
We have to get a clear plan to work on.
Can I point out the problem with that particular approach? It was expressed to me by a number of contractors that would've been involved. Without an engineered plan, it's hard to give specific numbers. They're, they're going to increase their costs, because if they have to provide the engineer, well, that's an added cost. And if everybody's not bidding on the same plan... I mean, I would encourage the board to find an engineer and whether you need to spend more money on a conceptual design or whether you need to approve the old conceptual design or approve the plan that was approved, whatever. I, I believe the plan that I provided to the school board would pass with an engineer's stamp if they understood what, what the design is. I believe, just in conversations with the folks at AWWA, it addresses storm water management issues using best management practices. So, I think that really the next step you need to do is get an engineer's stamp for whatever plan you approve.
So, you're saying we need to pick one of those plans?
I thought it was already done. And I thought it had been discussed a number of times.
It was, it was.
It may be.
So I'm saying, going back out, going back out, we're gonna go with what we said we originally picked.
Well, would it clarify the RFP if they all had the same design?
Which they did.
They did, but...
With instructions to redesign?
Redesign.
Well, see, that's just it.
It's not like we do this every day.
Well, it's like you're...
Mr. Jersey?
I just wanna, and I sent this back out to the board, original Harriman proposal. Stage one was a site analysis, which they came out and did. That's, that's what provided us the skin, that's what provided us the conceptual, that SK1 that we presented during our deliberative session as the plan. Stage two is the civil engineering design. So that's your next stage that, you know, Harriman put in their proposal. And let me, let me read what that, that entails. Harriman would meet with you, and I'm not suggesting Harriman, I'm not suggesting a specific company. This, this is what was provided to us, which lays out the stages. Stage two, civil engineering design. Meet with you for review and approval of developed schematic design prior to preparing construction documents. This is the point that we've been trying to talk about here, is prepare construction drawings in AutoCAD format, including details necessary for bidding to contractors. Prepare Town of Wakefield site plan review documents and attend a review meeting per State of New Hampshire RSA 674, colon, 54. School districts must notify local planning board. So, the civil engineering design is the next phase. That's the design that goes in front of the planning board. So once we have the civil engineering design, then we put the 60-day notice. I'm sure it's not gonna take 60 days to get in front of the planning board.
Are you trying to agree with me?
No, I'm trying to lay out the original format and hopefully move in the direction of the original format. Because what happened is, it started getting broken out into small, little project, little projects, and that's where we are now. I tried to make the point, the point at the beginning that we're gonna be left with a treeless lot that hasn't been basically prepped in any way whatsoever. It's an eyesore, we're gonna have erosion issues, because it has been fragmented a long way, because we didn't follow the stages.
Christopher?
Problem with the Harriman design, first of all, that specific deal never went out to bid. I don't know, I mean, I appreciate the fact that they cared enough about the Town of Wakefield to come forward and provide us conceptual designs and stuff like that. But that initial $6,000 should've been an issue itself to go out to bid. We don't, we're talking about a budgeted amount that the people approved. And I know who's sitting on the facilities committee. Our interest was working within that. And the fact that, the fact remains that we saved $5,900 on the tree removal, parting it out. So the school board and its facilities committee, I don't believe subverting our duties, trying to save the taxpayers the monies that we can by piecemealing it. I think now we're at a point where the design needs to be provided with an engineer's stamp. So we should really be discussing, does that go out for an RFP? Because it could be thousands of dollars. And that, according to Harriman, would be the next step in the process.
Is that a motion?
I'm moving nothing.
So are we gonna go with the, the plan that we voted on? The drawing we voted on? I can't remember the, give me a thing.
The second one.
Second one.
Right. Which moved, which moved the, the, the first one had a retention pond right through the middle of it. And the second one moved it to the, to the sides.
Yeah, I remember that.
And it gives you an additional 16 spaces of it, so...
So that was the plan we all voted on at that meeting? We need to make a motion now to get it engineered, Mr. Jersey? Is that what you're saying?
That's the next step.
Okay, so...
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. For discussion.
No, you won't.
Aye.
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 So we're gonna develop an RFP that seeks engineer...
Mr. Brown?
None.
Committee reports? Do we have any committee reports? Administration, curriculum coordinator?
I provided you with a report. Were there any questions? We did have quite a bit of work done on the curriculum between October 10th and November 9th, which is reflected in the report.
What's the Regional Quality Performance Assessment meeting?
Quality Performance Assessment is a network. The New Ha, New Hampshire has provided training for bringing in quality performance assessments that will help with the local assessments. So, performance assessments that happen actually here at the school that are embedded in the curriculum. So we have a team of teachers going. This is the second year now, Mr. Gregoire?
Yes.
That we've had teams of teachers going to the quality performance assessment to help them design those performance tasks and also design the rubrics that go with those tasks and to help them embed them into their curriculum.
Christopher?
Is this the NELMS? Any...
Madam Chair? No.
Not NELMS?
It is not NELMS.
That's a separate thing?
NELMS is the New England League of Middle Schools. And that is just a training that happens specifically for middle schools to get together and share information and do some training. Performance assessments may be part of NELMS, but this is a, a, sponsored by the Department of Ed in New Hampshire as a network.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Accountability Task Force?
The Accountability Task Force is a committee that meets at the New Hampshire DOE. And we basically talk about various items for accountability in the state of New Hampshire. This past meeting was that we developed a schedule based on the 12 weeks for the Smarter Balance test. And I've been talking to the, to Mr. Triter and Mr. Gregoire about that, that schedule for the Paul School.
Go ahead, Ralph.
Well, in the paragraph with the acronym CIA.
Just in front of it, it says Curriculum Assessment and Instruction.
Instruction, that's what it is.
Can we switch those words around, so I'm not totally confused? Because it would be CIA.
Thank you. I will do that next time. Sorry, you are, yeah, you're right.
Anybody else? Okay, moving on. Principal's report?
Yeah, you have my report, as well as Mr. Burns' discipline report. Any questions?
Sir? How's the residency forms doing?
Yeah, I haven't checked in a while. The last time I think we checked was a few weeks ago, Ralph. I believe we're somewhere in the range of 25 at that time, so I'd have to take a look.
25 missing?
About 25 missing, so they may all be in at this point. I just haven't checked. I can make a look if I can get over time.
Everybody else up? Okay, School Administrative Unit, Mr. Jersey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have on the agenda, potentially for December 3rd, I'd like to have New Hampshire School Board Association come and give a presentation on the material that I'd sent out to the board, basically running effective school board meetings. So I wanted to throw that out there. I have a tentative date of December 3rd. So that would be our next, our first meeting in December for that presentation. Just like to see if the board would be interested in seeing that presentation.
I would.
Mr. Fogg?
Is that the same meeting that the NHSBA is having on December 10th? Is that...
No.
So it's not different.
This would be Bear Christina coming and giving a presentation specific to our board.
The 10th is where I would go and vote with other delegates.
That's Saturday, yeah?
It's actually a Wednesday this year.
Yes.
That sounds good, Mr. Jersey, if you can set it up.
Thank you. Now, the next item in your package, you'll... The next item in your pack, you'll see the school district report material, this is when the board decides what you'd like in the town report. And last year, we basically had all of the, all of the items checked off, except for the special, special meeting, because we didn't have a special meeting. So, we included all of these in that town report, except for the special district meeting minutes and the special district meeting warrants, because we didn't have a special meeting. So, it's up to the, up to the board as to what you'd like to include this year.
When you say school district meeting minutes, that's the deliberative session itself? Okay.
And this is the same thing we had in last year's report?
Yes, minus those two items. And we'd also like to do the art contest as well for the cover, get some student artwork on there.
It's already the works.
Fantastic.
Ralph?
Can I make a motion to go with the same amount of information we've asked the district to put in our last year's report, striking the special meeting information?
I'll second that.
Can you?
I can, can I? Oh, yeah, I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bye.
Who seconded, please?
Thomas.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Correspondence? Public comment? Okay.
Yes, I do it.
Okay.
The RFP was written by the attorney. The only thing that changes in the RFP is the actual project. The problem with your RFP was that your project was not described. There were no specs to the project. You couldn't tell me how much gravel was gonna be put in that parking lot, or how much hot tub. If you have an engineer come out, look at the project, and do a design, all that comes with it. All the proper paperwork that you need to put something out to bid, all the specs, the engineer will give you.
Okay.
That's what you need. You need a new engineered plan. You need a engineer to tell you whether or not you have to do another wetlands permit, because the plan that you currently have approved is putting, I believe, it was said, a third of the water into the old parking lot drainage. I don't believe you can do that, because the old parking lot drainage, I believe, was a wetlands permit design, and you can't dump additional water into something without getting it re-approved. Your engineer would do all those things.
Great, okay. Thank you.
And that's what you, you need to start totally over with a new plan and put an RFP out for an engineer, in my opinion. And unless you have an engineered plan, I as a taxpayer am not going to vote to give you one more dime, because if what has happened over the last year is an example of how this project is gonna be handled, I as a taxpayer don't feel, without a plan, that we should be giving you any more money. Because this has been ridiculous, and it's just taken way too long. And the whole problem stems from, I believe, not having an engineered plan to begin with.
Thank you. Mr. Fogg?
I'm just curious, Judy, the wetlands permit, I went on the query there from the DES, and I couldn't find a historical permit issued regarding that parking lot. Can you remember what year that parking lot was done?
It was when the building was, the addition was put on the building. It was in the 90s.
And they go back quite a, quite a distance.
I know that we were told we had to wait for the permit to do the work on the parking lot. No, I don't know if that was, maybe at the time it was a town permit, but I believe we were waiting for a wetlands permit, because that was all signed as the drainage that went out through the field, under the field, and I believe we were waiting for a wetlands permit at the time.
But you can't remember the year that this all happened?
It should have been about '97, '98.
Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody's all set? Make a motion to go into non-public pursuant to RSA 91-A, semicolon, 3, 2, seat.
Make a motion. Go second it.
All in favor?
Fogg, aye. Fogg, aye.
Ralph, yes.
Troy, aye.